All right, I'm gonna open the planning board meeting for the town of Raleigh for November 9th, 2016. Thanks everyone for coming. The first item on the agenda is a continued public hearing regarding a special permit for sign lighting in 300 Newburyport Turnpike, map 13, lot 14D, zoned retail, zoned district. So the two of you are the petitioners, can you just identify yourselves and tell us where we're at on this?
I'm Scott Silver from Jell's Group.
Max Gabriella from Jell's Group.
And 300 Newburyport Turnpike.
Okay, so last time we were in here, we were having a conversation about the non-compliance of the existing sign relative to zoning order. I know we had conversations about the fact that it seems like an ordinance that in a lot of other instances is not always enforced literally. And nonetheless, we're asking you to take a look at it to see if there's any alternative to the way it's currently structured.
Yeah, well, I think at that time, I asked a few folks, we'd kind of take a ride by and see if you saw anything that you didn't like or it wasn't, it was, you know, obstructing sight and so on and so forth. And I think there was a photograph taken, I saw here, a photograph.
I just took one.
Now, I think we, most of us did kind of take a look around at your site as well as some of the properties that are in the same district that have similar type lighting. While we're still stuck in the same position, is there, one of the things that we discussed though was, is it possible to move the lighting from the top so that it goes top-down?
There is a light going from the top.
I know, but...
Another light?
Or otherwise disconnect the lighting from the bottom up?
Yeah, I mean, I can disconnect it, it's just...
Or you'll lose the illumination.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
Well, how much would it lose?
Half.
Well, yeah, I guess, but would half still be sufficient?
I don't think that light, you know, it's an LED light that has, you know, what is it, drawing 39 watts or whatever it is each side. I don't think it would shoot all the way down the sign, I mean, we can try it, it just...
Like put it in the middle pointing down, I don't know.
The problem is that thing's made out of steel, and it's tube steel. So trying to get wiring into the middle, and then we'd have to cut out, you know, we'd have to get a torch or something to try to... The way we have it set up, we thought, you know, it would be best closer to the sign. Now, everybody else, who we talked about last time, has theirs on the ground shooting up and they're away from the sign. Ours, Kurt, do you have a shot of that one?
I know, yours is bracketed right to the base of the sign.
Ours is bracketed to the base and it just shoots up, so it's not out here like this.
And I think the concern too was that it's this light source when people are driving, when you see the light source, that's really what the problem is, that's what you folks pass that ordinance for.
You can see the light source as you drive by, you can see the element, yeah, there's a direct sight to the element. I saw it, I just went by this.
What, you mean from one side to the other?
When you're driving by, if you look to the left or to the right, whatever.
So driving northbound past the sign?
Yeah, yeah, look to the left for a brief second or two, you can see the, there's a direct view of the element of the light of the picture, so, you know, you don't agree, I mean...
Was that the intent originally when this was written for the sign?
Well, I think, yeah, yeah.
And we have seen some instances...
Intent is to prevent glare.
Where they changed it to move it up to the top because it was sitting on the ground. But there, it was right in your eye.
Well, you know, it's not, it's not the worst lighting installation in the world.
I went by the other day and, from the northbound, I didn't see any light, all the light was on the sign.
Yeah, and I'm not saying it's the worst thing in the world in terms of glare, but it doesn't comply with our zoning bylaw. And, you know, we're not at liberty to waive provisions in the zoning bylaw. We're just not at liberty to do that, and it's not how the system is supposed to work.
Is it also only to approve what you can approve and to... I mean, just with the intent, approve the one on top.
Yeah.
The one on the bottom, like, I mean, that just really not address it, but with the intent that in the next town meeting we put together...
Well, I don't know if that's gonna happen, frankly.
You don't think that there would be a chance of making...
We can't promise you that we can change the zoning bylaw because it has to go to the town meeting and that could potentially be denied. So, you know, we're not gonna sit here and say that this is what we want you to do, within six months, we'll change it for you. I think what Kirk is discussing is, you know, potentially approving the sign to the extent that we can approve it, which is top-down lighting, which would put you in a situation where you, if you're gonna comply with the order, disconnect the top-up lighting or otherwise mounted so that it's shooting down.
Approve the sign with a condition that all lights be pointed up downward, not upward.
Now, you're in a situation where you're subject to the same compliance that all your other butters and neighbors are subject to, which is the town can come forward and tell you that you're not compliant. Do you see where they've been with that? I can't tell you whether they're gonna enforce or not, that's not...
And that's another thing we can't consider either. We can't say, "Well, this isn't being enforced, so we're not gonna enforce it in this case." We can only...
Well, and unless, I'm not encouraging you to disregard the order we can give you, but the risk is, if you continue to operate the sign as it currently is, is not compliant. So, I mean, I think, I mean, I've given this a lot of consideration, I've talked to Kirk about it a number of times, and I actually question whether we should just continue this meeting indefinitely until there's some enforcement, or at least some discussion of enforcement about, go ahead.
The problem is, is that, you know, I understand your concerns, I understand the antiquated bylaws as far as I see it. You know, as far as, you know, everybody else coming in compliance, I don't think it's ever gonna happen. I don't know if, that's a pretty big responsibility for Ken to try to govern, you know, Ipswich Glass and all these guys paying huge tax bills and they can't have lights how they want it, I get that. But for us right now, it's restricting income. And this is, you know, attached to a few other things that we've tried to do. We've just spent over $275,000 on the building, we're tapped out, and now we can't get a roast beef guy in there because I've got a light in there incorrectly installed according to the bylaw. So, it doesn't seem fair to me, there's six other people around me.
Were you gonna put the roast beef sign, is that gonna go on the top?
It's down, it's down here. It's down here.
I don't wanna, I'm not sure that's necessarily, you know, within our discretion to decide where your roast beef, where the signs should go, you know?
Right, right.
No, I knew you weren't, I mean, you know...
I think he was just asking.
But I mean, I'm just looking, and there's a space up there for a roast beef sign, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Right underneath the light.
Yeah, right, 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 I mean, hey, we can put it up there.
It's sort of with the pizza factory sign.
Yeah, that's a sore subject.
The thing is, we're in a position where we can't approve what you got. We can't approve something that would allow you to augment the sign you have now with some additional lighting, but I know what you're saying, it's not, I don't know, it doesn't seem, even if you had to have somebody come in with a torch and cut a hole for the tube steel to get the, I don't, I mean, it's...
You can run EMT up the side of the tube steel and then over to something pointing down.
Well, can we continue this for a while?
So this guy, the roast beef person won't move in unless you have a spot light on the sign?
No.
Is that what he's saying?
No, we can't, I can't get Ken to approve the sign.
Then if I was you as a business guy, I would just delete the bottom two lights and get them to show on the road.
That's what I think I'm gonna have to do, but I was hoping not to do that, I think that's what I'm gonna have to do.
That costs you a lot of money without a tenant in there.
Well, I mean, here's one thing you can consider.
Then you're, then you're going with the law, you're all set, and if you ever wanna add them, then maybe you can write her on, something to get changed.
There's definitely some discussion about trying to get the bylaw amended to bring it up to a modern standard. One of the things we were discussing was the, what is it, the candle foot from the, you know, just the measurement of light at different distances. I'm not saying that that, you know, so what I'm saying is if you accept what we're able to provide you today, disconnect what you have now, which is upward pointing light, and then, I mean, I do think that there's a good chance that in the near future, we may have a different ordinance, but I can't at all suggest that that's a certainty. Go ahead.
Can he leave the apparatus in the hardware and just take out the lights? Or is it possible to just turn the lights off or...
I mean, I think it's the operation of the lights that's the violation, not the fact that they're...
But if you see it or you find $10 more in your pocket, put in the lights that are facing down. Solve the problem. At the same time, we can look at the uplights.
I mean, maybe I'll just put one of those lights like you have on that parking lot there, 'cause I'm still seeing UFOs from that day. I mean, you look at these lights that they have around town? I mean, if that's the case, I could put one up there like that to make it work.
Do you actually see the lights when you're driving?
You don't wanna hear this, but our lighting bylaw doesn't apply to me, that's for sure.
Of course, of course, of course it doesn't, of course it doesn't. But it would be top lit, I mean, it would probably light up, you know, a mile in either directions because those lights are unbelievable.
We have a bylaw that covers you.
Yeah, I know, I noticed.
Well, you can't cause glare, what kind of lights?
So, you know, so can we extend this until we, to a later date? Until everybody else is brought into compliance?
You want the sign approved, then we need the sign approved before we can comply with our own condition, which was that this matter would be resolved before we move forward on it. But yeah, at this point, you're not asking Ken to issue you a certificate of occupancy for the new roast beef restaurant, or are you?
Yeah.
You presently are, okay.
Yeah, it's all tied in.
That's kind of the problem is that the CO is also, or I mean, that occupancy permit was also contingent on the lighting being, becoming compliant. It might just be easier to disconnect.
Just kidding.
I mean, you know what, to be honest with you, I live in Raleigh my whole life, I go there my whole life, I've never even looked at that sign. I looked down in there to see what stores are or whatever, and then I, people have Googled, people, that light...
Yeah, I mean, if it makes it easier, I mean, I'll have to disconnect.
You wanna get somebody in there and start making your thousands of dollars a month, then you might flip the little light so it's being shut off. And you move on, reapply, and the bylaw changes. Six months, eight months, a year on the road, but we're going.
So if you'd like us to approve the sign with the top-mounted light, we can take a motion on that and likely help move this forward.
That would save them from coming back again.
Yeah, right.
Unless you like coming here.
Well, I got nothing else to do.
Well, you like coming, you wanna come here, we can keep on, it would be...
I love all you folks, I got nothing else to do. I mean, it is what it is, if I gotta do that, then I gotta do that, and, you know, that's a great suggestion.
You got two parts to it, one is to turn off the low light, one is to get approved for downlighting it in case you wanna do that, so you don't have to come back unless you really wanna come back.
Right, right. I think I'd like to come back when the bylaw actually gets changed.
Sure.
You know what I mean, I think, I just...
You're afraid to do that, if that, you know...
I don't understand.
It happens.
And I think that there's...
Do bylaws ever get changed?
Yes, they do, and we're trying to look at it, I mean, and I think... In talking to this gentleman that was here that was instrumental in putting together the existing bylaw 10, 15 years ago, you know, things have changed a great deal since then, and the technology, the lighting, the stuff that people can install has changed a lot, so I think it's time to look at it again. And where I think, last time around, they were just worried about standard lighting. Now we're looking at LED lighting that's got much different prints and qualities, so I think we're likely to look at it.
And there's some other issues with lighting and the way people tend to use light. Now, if you go down one in Saguas, you will see some glaring examples of misuse of light.
So all the other signs that are uplit around me, doesn't matter, just they just kinda stay how it is?
If their sign falls down, they have to redo it and they go.
All right.
We can only deal with what's before the board.
But we have approached and brought people in on some of them. I know where Bart Plaza is and the Pizza Factory went in. That was moved from being on the ground to the top.
Yeah, I got you. So...
That does not excuse other people who have done things randomly.
Enforcement is initiated through, I believe through a citizen's filing at the building inspector's office about people who are violation.
Right.
So, you know, I'm not encouraging you to start battles with butters.
I like to mind my own business, it's, you know, and I don't think they are actually doing anything wrong. I just think the only wrong thing is that the bylaw is integrated and that it needs a remedy, that's all. And obviously, I'm caught in the storm a little bit, you know, of, I'm in the middle here, so, and I gotta do it.
You're blocking your sign blue over and then it all started.
Yeah, 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 I got you.
This probably would make more sense if we put the light up and it was a glare and it was a problem for people driving than...
That's our point of view. Their point of view is, hey, we got a bylaw, we gotta, you know...
No, I guess, all I was trying to say is that when you drive right past the place, you do have that situation where you have glare in your eyes as you're driving, you know, from a bunch of...
That's what we had at Bart Plaza, was something right in the eyeball.
Yeah, coming down the hill.
Those lights were strategically placed, so we should like...
So, Kirk, if we were to take a vote to approve the sign subject to the disconnection of the upward-mounted lighting?
Yeah, of the, yeah.
The bottom lights?
Yeah, the bottom lights pointing up, and then approve the ones, the top lights that are pointing down.
Right, and are, we looking for a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we have unanimous in favor, so the sign's approved, subject to the conditions we just discussed.
He'll get that too.
And that brings up, I guess, the next issue, which is whether we're complying with the conditions that would allow us to move forward on the certificate of occupancy, right?
I thought if I made the motion to close the public hearing now, also.
That's appropriate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so unanimous.
So we just move on to the next fence. So we're done with that, with the light, and now we're just moving on.
Oh, I see, I thought we were gonna leave.
So, the inspector signed up on all the sprinklers, the fire department?
Yeah.
All right. Board of Health on the inspection, obviously.
I got the building permit for the roast beef place, so they had to sign all that.
Kirk, is there, Larry didn't do any technical review?
He hasn't done, he hasn't done the site because he technically should before, and then there is the issue, the parking area, that was gonna have to be done eventually, right?
What parking area?
Well, I'm saying the...
The striping?
Yeah, the striping, but also with the, because there were the catch basins that were needing to be replaced, and then the parking area, that was part of the...
Yeah, we can't do any of that until, 'cause the septic system, can't do any of that until the springtime, says Jesse.
Okay.
So that's what I'm saying, you know, I can't wait till spring or summertime to have a tenant in there.
In the, in the, the former Pizza Factory, you're saying, okay. And you guys are...
I need to get revenue actually to pay for those items.
Yeah.
Because we just spent for the septic and the sprinklers. And all the other, the other stuff that we've accomplished, we've paid for that as well.
Does El Capitio, do they use that overflow parking in the rear pretty regularly?
No, never.
Never.
I mean, they use it for some employees here and there, but it's, I think Saturday night is their biggest, I mean, drive by there, unfortunately, no.
I know at one point Larry talked about the drainage along between you and Yankee Lumber, right?
Yeah, yeah, I've been talking with Dave, and Jesse and I are gonna come up with a plan for that. Because we're gonna, we wanna hot-top that strip as well, so we wanna put some underground drywells coming off that roof in that area, but we can't really do it right now.
That's gonna take some consideration, not to...
What was the cost of the septic system?
Almost $200.
Yeah, that was a big issue. Things could semi-failing for...
That put us, that put us really behind the eight ball.
But that will remove all leverage that's, you know, exists.
And that's all up to date now.
It's brand new.
Yeah.
And the sprinkler hood.
Complete those improvements after we release that occupancy permit, unless another one becomes...
Well, yeah, another one's always gonna come along, isn't it? Yeah, so...
He said you're not, but...
So...
I don't wanna hold it up.
Hot-top in the rear, lots driving, or drainage.
Yeah.
So...
What do we need for a motion?
I guess we're looking for a motion to determine that the conditions established by the special permit are...
Yeah, it's really to release the file, the occupancy permit with that unit associated formerly with the Pizza Factory. I don't know if it has a certain number, maybe attach a number to it, but a conditional on...
They're holding it on the Pizza Factory.
But you still have to have the condition that all future occupancy permits will be held until, you know, such time.
Further compliance?
Further compliance. But it would be...
I mean, I can't, I can't do anything until Jesse said late spring or June, because I gotta, I gotta hot-top it, and the problem is, are the tanks and the piping, when they dug it all up back, it's still settling. And he said, "Don't do anything this year because we'll keep filling it in, filling it in, filling it in, and then it'll finally settle out, and then you can hot-top it when it's hot," you know?
Well, I'll make the motion that, and the wording that Kirk gets articulated.
I'll second. I'll go back and watch.
Okay, right. So all in favor of allowing the certificate of occupancy to issue based on the compliance with the existing conditions, except those that are ongoing and will continue?
Well, I mean, yeah, I know one tenant, one tenant is gonna be, you know, unfortunately leaving there, so...
Well, you know what, the certificate of occupancy, as long as it's the same use, doesn't need to reissue.
Right.
If it's continuing or somewhere...
Well, this is another business that's failing, so...
All right. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so...
So what does that mean?
Means you can get it. Yeah, you can get it, I'll let Ken know tomorrow.
And then going forward, what do I, what do we do?
Basically, the, those couple of items that are left will be, we'll redo the memo that we had done before, and I'll send you a formal letter that would state that these items are outstanding, that you have before another occupancy permit, any future occupancy permits or...
What if someone, I think there's one failing in December, so I...
Oh, no, that's...
And that's obviously tough to hear, but if the next tenant comes in for a retail establishment, I think that they're, you know, a matter of right, if they have something that requires a special permit, that's a whole different story.
No, special permit's just a building permit, you know, occupancy permit.
Yeah, but, you know, if their occupancy is retail or even food service, I think it's the same use, you don't need a new certificate of occupancy.
Septic system.
I don't know how that works.
Well, we should, should we leave that up to the building inspector? That's really not our...
We can always revisit the...
Right, you can always revisit it.
I mean, you can come back in as you need to, and you can revisit and look at each individual situation.
All right.
But it'd probably be easier to do it...
He's balancing it up with Ken.
Yeah, okay. I think Ken feels handcuffed in some ways because of, you know...
Because of the conditions.
The conditions, you know, so I obviously don't wanna add to his level of discontent, but...
Well, I think what we've done effectively today is gotten the conditions out of the way for the Pizza Factory site. You can get your tenant in there and do what they need to do.
Okay.
Ken can talk to...
I'll talk to Ken tomorrow.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, well, you know, hope everything starts to, hope this rights the ship a little bit.
Must be a bad location, I don't know what's going on.
Well, you know, you put all that money, you've been doing 15 years, 20 years of clean hunting from here on.
I do a Pizza Factory, they've been there for like 20 years, those guys are...
I'll tell ya.
They're long, long, long.
It's a little bit of a story, but net-net is...
Net-net?
Net-net is, you know, she was discontented with a couple of things, like the trash. You know, she didn't wanna pay $50 extra for trash, and we looked up on the ramp, we didn't need anything, we were gonna sign a whole new lease with them, and they didn't wanna park out back, they wanted to park in the front row. So I was just like...
Well, they can't control whether people are parked in them.
No, them.
Oh, personally, right.
There were three cars in the front row up against the building, I said, I said, "Yeah, what happens when you do that? It affects everybody along that area because your customers have to park." And I said, "You can't do that," so, and it was just a tough relationship. And hopefully they're doing well, it looks like they did a nice job over there, so...
Pizza's still good.
They're parking out in front of the building, I think, too.
Yeah, there's no question.
They're parking right there.
There's no question, but hey, that's on the...
Well, the other use is closed at night.
Yeah, the Bart Plaza there, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, well, we have an 8 o'clock meeting, so hopefully...
Good luck.
All right, thanks so much.
Thanks.
Thanks for your attention, take care.
So, the 8 o'clock meeting, we have a site plan review modification to the existing layout of 319 Newburyport Turnpike to Raleigh Business Park to install a children's playground associated with the operation of a children's daycare use. I have a couple of notices I have to read to open this public hearing, all right? So, in accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, the Raleigh Protective Zoning Bylaw and the Raleigh Planning Board Rules and Regulations, the Raleigh Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Wednesday, November 9th, at 8 o'clock in the meeting room number 5 in the downstairs of the Town Hall Annex, building located at 39 S. Park and Central Street, Raleigh, Massachusetts, pertaining to Site Plan Review Amendment Application involving modification of the existing commercial layout to install children's playground in the front yard area consisting of 1,500 square feet to be located in the street yard between the South Park and Lot and the Newburyport Turnpike, Route 1, to be associated with the operation of proposed children's daycare facility in commercial unit number 104. John Oliver and Caitlin Oliver, the applicants, have submitted the application on behalf of Ed Shuret, property owner, to modify the existing site layout of 319 Newburyport Turnpike, which is further identified as Assessor's Map 17, Lot 20 through 48. The site is located in Business Light Industrial Zoning District. Approval of an amendment, pardon me, of an amended site plan approval is required for significant modification to the existing approved site layout in the Business Light Industrial Zoning District pursuant to Section 7.6 Site Plan Review of the Raleigh Protective Zoning Bylaw. The applications and plans and relevant documents are on file with the Raleigh Planning Board and are available for the public inspection at the Raleigh Planning Board Office, Town Hall Annex, 39 Central Street, during public office hours. So, who's our petitioner? Hi, why don't you come forward, just come up and just let, you know, the camera, so identify yourself and tell us where you live.
I'll make the motion to open the public hearing.
Second. Are those in?
Yeah, good, so, yeah, they're good, good. You need a parliamentarian. Thanks, so the meeting's open.
Okay, so my name's Caitlin Oliver, I actually live in Gloucester, Massachusetts. So, I wanted to start by saying, obviously, it's a preschool, so the children's safety is my main priority. I got letters from the fire chief, the police chief, and the selectmen. So I took all their concerns into play. The main concern was a car coming off Route 1 into the play area. So my, what I wanna do to impose it, to take additional steps in order to make the children safe, I wanna place a multi-layered barrier, one being large boulders right on the corner, followed by trees like tall junipers, side-pressed trees, which would become both a barrier to cars as well as flying debris, which, based off a conversation I had with the police chief, was his main concern. And then with a six-foot chain-linked fence covered in a privacy screen that surrounds the entire playground area. The fire chief's main concern was the children crossing the road from where the preschool's located to the play area. Prior to these concerns, the precautions that I was going to take, where all children will be holding a chain to keep them together, there will be a teacher in front of them and a teacher behind them at all times while walking. The teacher will first come out from the staircase before the children even start to walk across the street. In addition to those, I'm looking to enhance the safety measures... In addition to those, I'm looking to enhance the safety measures by, I'm gonna create a crosswalk from the stairs over to the grass area, as well as incorporating dummies that will be placed in the crosswalk that say like children crossing, and then all the way throughout the lot. Putting slow children signs up at the entrance of the complex, cause it's not normally known that children would be there, and set out a notification to all businesses in the complex with scheduled times of when I will be outside so they can get used to the schedule when there will be kids there. There's three sessions, a half hour each, from eleven to twelve thirty that will be happening, and children will not be out during inclement weather for obvious, obvious safety reasons. Over the last few days, it was great to get perspective from the fire chief, police chief, and selectmen. With the feedback, I thought of ways that I can enhance all safety measures related to the students, which is once again my main focus and priority. Hopefully, the additional measures I have outlined help to address all your concerns that have been presented, and I appreciate any additional feedback you have.
Thank you.
I've got a lot of concerns about this. First of all, I, I don't, I don't think this is a good use for a multi-use warehouse, consumer service, mixed-use office building. I'm really concerned about having kids walking, walking across the access drive, and I know you, you've talked about measures to minimize risk, but I just don't think it's a good place for this, this kind of thing. And then they have to walk across the access drive and then walk through a parking lot to get to this, this recreation area. You know, there's things you can do to, to make it safer, sure, but the bottom line, in my opinion, this is not a good spot for this. In this, this particular development, I mean, you get, you get a, cars and trucks, and some big trucks I've seen pull in there, coming off Route One at a high rate of speed, no deceleration lane, they're coming around that corner, and, you know, I just think it's not a good thing. I can't, I don't think I can support this. The other issue is, you're talking about, you got some nice plantings there in that area, which were approved originally, Ken probably remembers this, I mean, this was, this building was approved originally on the condition that this landscaping would be put in place. And Ed Shuret, he's done a great job, he's a landscaper himself, the, the plantings look good, and now you're talking about removing them.
Actually, you're gonna.
Yeah, well.
As intent was to move them out closer to the road and retain them, so from a visibility standpoint, aesthetics should still be there. That's also the reason.
And I wonder if that's gonna create a site distance issue if you do that, but, you know.
That is actually a one-way, you would enter on that side and then come out the other side.
Oh, so it's only one way.
It's only one way, yeah.
So how much?
Well, well, the site distance from, you still, I don't know, I, I don't know where these plantings are gonna be, but you still might have a site distance issue, issue with respect to vehicles making that turn and not being able to see something in the access drive until they round the corner. I don't know, but that, I, I, you know, I, I just don't think this is a good idea, and, you know, I can't support it. And I hate saying that, cause you know, who doesn't like a daycare center, you know what I mean?
There are other daycare centers.
There's a room all back behind the building somehow to a play area in the back section.
Well, there's a drop-off, on the other side of that building is a really steep drop-off, right? So you can't, you couldn't go to that side to do it.
We, we looked at a piece of that, cause it had some feasibility, and we went to the Conservation Commissioner, and he had questions on the buffer, I guess is a wetlands buffer, I'm not that familiar with the property. Ed had said he had talked to him since, but I haven't gotten, we haven't connected.
I actually talked to him today.
I, I agree with Cliff, this is not the right location for a daycare facility. As an architect, I'm very familiar with daycare, I'm working on one in Lynn right now. I know you have a requirement for this play area and certain kinds of equipment in the play area, but getting across that road with somebody who may be coming in at fifty miles an hour or faster, and it just is responsibility that I, I would think that you would not wanna take there. There must be better locations for this facility. I'm sure there's a need for daycare. My dog goes to daycare, so I know that people need daycare, but this is not a good location for what you're trying to do, I don't think.
There's also the traffic flow issue that you would have morning drop-off and morning pickup. Where you have to look into cars getting in and out of that side, you know, being able to not just go north, but make left turns and go south as well.
Well, Ben, and so much of that is, you know, we can only, it's really based on what's on the ground today, but things are gonna change. There's, there's no full occupancy there today, we don't know what kind of businesses are necessarily gonna be in there, and you certainly can't restrict what time those businesses operate and when their clients are coming and going. It, it does seem like it's not a great fit, I mean, I, I, in fact, you mentioned that there's some requirements for what kind of, what kind of equipment they have inside those play areas.
Certain things you have to have, both inside your daycare and outside the daycare.
It seems like a pretty narrow, I mean, how much land is between the front of the, that paved parking area and, and the shoulder of Route One? How much land is that roughly?
Some of that state land. The other thing is that that fence will probably, with the landscaping, will detract from the viewing of the building.
It will, yeah, right.
It's just gotta be a better location.
I was just thinking, the guy that was just here, he had something all back at his place, I don't know, that's, in the back of the building where the kids run around on the roof in the back.
They don't need the largest area for play, a play area, but they do need certain requirements.
What are those?
Is this a, like, no, this is bigger than a family daycare.
Yeah, max is forty.
Forty.
Yeah, that's basically one bathrooms.
Is there a zoning issue, Kirk? Did you look at that?
No, there's no zoning issue because the use is, is automatically.
No, no, I'm not talking about that. We have a setback requirement for, for businesses, it's a minimum of fifty feet.
Well, not for the, not for the, not for the playground itself.
Well, I don't know, that's what I'm asking, doesn't, I mean, I haven't looked at, at the provision in a while, but doesn't it say that you can't put anything within the fifty-foot setback area? Except for an access drive? You can put landscaping, and the intent of it is supposed to be a landscaping, a landscape strip to make the, the building more aesthetically appealing. And that's what was done here, and it looks pretty good, but now they're talking about, I don't know, they're talking about moving the.
Moving it forward, so between the parking lot and where the trees are right now, that one piece is what they're gonna move the trees, about ten feet closer to the road, is what it's proposing.
Which, you know. State property.
Well, they can't go on, I wouldn't think they can go on the state property. But the first fifty feet of the business is the, is the, is supposed to be a landscape buffer. And the intent is you can't put anything in it except for landscaping. That's just another issue.
It seems like there's any number of reasons why this may not be a good fit, I mean, the, it was approved with certain conditions that were now being asked to, to disturb and change today. We certainly all have concerns about the, the safety of vehicular and pedestrian traffic within the site, as well as the safety of the area, children are from cars that might be traveling north and south on Route One. I know you mentioned some of the things you could potentially do to mitigate that risk, but landscape boulders and certain Jersey barriers would be, go, go against the aesthetic plan that you were trying to accomplish.
I'm not sure, the, the, I think that the, in the Business Light Industrial District, the, you might be, are you referring to the construct, general construction, landscaping, and similar contractors with open storage? There is a, there is a buffer of seventy.
It's a setback requirement, though, if you can, if you wanna pass that over, I can.
There is one for seventy feet in that, but that's.
You know, I, I don't think it's, I mean, even, even if this isn't a problem, I don't, you know, there are other issues which we've all talked about.
Is there anyone else present that wants to comment on this project, this petition? I wanna make sure we keep things open. Kirk, what were the?
Okay, well, I might as well just read this. Nothing shall be built or installed on any lot in the retail district or the business light industry district within the minimum setback area measured from the street lines. And that's a minimum of fifty feet. Depending on the length of the building, if the building is, is more than a hundred and fifty feet in length, the setback area gets larger, but it's a minimum of fifty, so we're talking about something within fifty feet of the street, I believe. And it says nothing shall be installed, so that's pretty clear.
Huh?
Playground equipment.
Yeah, installations, fixtures.
Built or installed, okay, that pretty much covers that.
Just not a good fit.
No.
No, it's a safety thing, you know.
Yeah, well, that's actually right at fifty feet, the parking lot, but the playground would be within the fifty feet, so.
Yeah, that's what it looks like, right?
Yeah.
That's, that's not even, that's not, even if we were inclined to, that's something we could waive.
No.
So a question. In the back, with a lower area, is, if that is feasible, the same concerns?
Well, if you can, no, not, no. It's not the same concerns, if you could configure it, I mean, I, I think you'd have to arrange it so.
This area.
So avoid children crossing roads, crossing the drive.
Well, they still have to cross to get over there.
They'd be crossing through the back, though, you know, it's, it's so hard to quantify what the, the risk really is, but I think everyone's thinking that you got cars traveling fifty, fifty miles an hour that may turn hard into that lot. They're not gonna turn around the building hard.
Out here, yeah.
Yeah, so, so if that were in the back, I think they'd be going, you know, they're not gonna be turning hard off into the back.
So just yesterday, and we haven't had a chance to, had a lot of conversation about it, but if we'd looked at this piece right here, it's the same dimensions we were looking at, it's in the back, it's off the street, so it takes a lot of the concerns of the fire chief and the police chief had, and the selectmen. This is the area, I think it's right out here with that, I think it's called buffer zone?
And there may be some things you could do to the. Within the passageway, the automotive passageway, to assure that people will slow down and, and be aware that there are children possibly crossing.
So that, I won't say it's gonna fix everything, but is that more appealing?
Well, you know, the thing is, one of the problems with this first, first place, as he correctly pointed out, within, within a buffer, we can't really make adjustments. But.
Within the setback area.
Within the setback, yeah.
The wetland buffer, that's, that's not.
That's a different conversation.
That's not for us.
Yeah, that would be a conservative.
But where a lot of the concerns were the aesthetics on Route One, well, now they're not gonna, those aren't gonna be affected.
Does it come to us at all? It would come to us because of the.
We still have to approve it.
But he's asking, is that a possibility from our point of view?
Yeah. Not change of use.
It's a much more positive. You wanna know whether you.
You did get a lot more business, like if I had a child, they'd say, I grew up on Route One. I was just getting, I don't hate to, like, shoot my mouth off, but I was scared just hearing this whole thing. I mean, if it's out back, it's like a whole different story.
Is there access from the back of your rental?
Yes, and there's an elevator for.
So the, the kids would just be crossing the, the back parking lot. Yeah, I'd be less concerned about that.
But with the parking, that you guys said, like the in and out, like, cause they're gonna be picking up and dropping off at different times, it's like a half day or a full day. So would that still be a concern as far?
I was gonna ask that question. On the drop-offs, they're at random times, I think.
Well, it starts at six thirty and goes till five o'clock. So.
So you have people coming and going all day long, otherwise.
Yeah.
But pickup times sometimes close to that deadline, sometimes is a little bit more.
Yeah, so twelve thirty would be busy, cause that's half day, and then five o'clock would be busy, but most of the businesses over there close at four o'clock that I've seen, so five o'clock would be.
Where would the drop-off be? In the back, back of the building, in front?
The, the, pick-up and drop-off would continue to be in the front, but the, if you were to be able to relocate the playground out the back, then you'd access the playground through the back door, right?
Correct, yes.
So they wouldn't necessarily have the children.
They wouldn't even be outside.
Crossing that line of traffic.
Right.
I mean, that seems like a much more viable alternative.
Would that require more of a, more engineering in terms of, in regards to having a plan amendment? I mean, you could really do it through this process, but you would have to go get an engineer, have them draw up the plan that actually shows modification of that area. You'd have to also get it approved by ConCon to be able to, to encroach into the, into the buffer.
You would have to look into what kind of improvements you have to make to the land and, you know, whether an engineer is required. Have to consult with the Conservation Commission to, to make sure that they'll allow it.
Yeah, but I didn't wanna pursue, I didn't wanna pursue.
And if you guys said no, that it wouldn't work either.
Right. I mean, that's.
There may be some, you know, there are speed bumps that you can buy that go across that lane there, and maybe some striping. And that same procedure of leading the kids across, et cetera.
Just some clearly defined pedestrian crosswalks that have race signs that, you know, I mean, I think you could start with do something. But it does seem like there's a fair amount of engineering you would have to go in it because it does tail off down there. Is there a flat spot presently down there?
In the middle, there's, in the middle is about a, we went out twenty-five feet where they have crushed stone already, and they have a, what's it, fiber, soil fiber thing, an etherox. And that, the plane is probably about a two-foot drop over twenty-five feet. So we'll just bring that, make it not level, but reduce the pitch and.
So there's a safe pathway to that from.
There's a guardrail there, but we wouldn't.
We don't open the door, well, we took, like I said, it was about five minute conversation of, here's another option, and that was done yesterday.
Well, I, I would suggest that we continue this, so we'll have to allow them to look at it as an option.
Can I put it in two phases? The phase that we proposed, you guys have rejected.
Well, you know, we're not gonna reject it, we're gonna say, we want you to come back and show us something different to consider.
Okay.
All right, and, and as proposed, you've heard the comments, and, you know, and just to kinda pass the buck, we don't have the discretion to approve it, within that buffer area, we can't allow you to build. So you kinda have to look someplace else in the site.
I have reasons for asking it the way I asked.
Please, I'm glad you're letting ahead.
Has to do with the lease.
Absolutely, so, if I get a motion to continue this hearing?
Yeah, you're gonna go to the ConCon and discuss.
I already went yesterday, but Ed, I got different feedback than Ed did, so I didn't need to have a connection.
Yeah, yeah, talk to them too, cause they're certainly, you know.
I may, I make a motion to open, continue this hearing.
For how long? Right now, we're seeing what, December seventh is our next?
December seventh is the next meeting, if you wanna do it January.
Well, I'll give you my feedback, I'm gonna approach Ed, we're gonna get with the Conservation Commission, and if they have a lot of challenges and issues, then it may not be the right property for what we're trying to do.
Right, sure.
All right, we'll go for December seventh.
Kirk, I mean, we can put this on the meeting up until ten days before December seventh, right? And if you withdraw it, please let us know, and we'll just take care of that.
Cool. So I'll second David's argument.
All in favor of continuing the, the hearing? Aye, seeing an answer.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Good luck, and hopefully something that works for you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Can I see the show up? All right, good, so next item on our agenda today is a, we're asked to look at an A and R approval not required pertaining to Lucille Herrick Realty Trust Parcels located at Two Mill Road Map, Lot five dash one oh five, eleven acres, and Forty Dodge Road Map, Lot five dash one oh four, fourteen point four acres, to create a total of five additional lots. So, who's our petitioner? All right. And, all right, so you submitted, who is your engineer that put together the plan?
That heard.
That, Eric.
Yeah, we have copied it.
Yeah, I got it up here in there. So this is the outline of this zoning minimum lot size sixty thousand square feet. They're proposing to create four lots off of Dodge Road, and Lot five will have frontage off of Mill Road. Dodge Road is public, is public accepted road. Mill Road is actually a private road that's not accepted, not accepted by the town, but is publicly maintained, so...
So that was a land that existed prior to?
Yeah, it existed prior to.
That'd be different one? Just maintained by the town?
And it is, yeah, it is maintained.
What is down that road?
At the very end, I believe it's, is that your house? Yeah. There's a house at the end of that.
So it's paved and...
It is paved, yes.
Adequate width and all that?
Yeah, the width is the same, the width is the same as Dodge Road, I think.
Where's the loose?
Yeah, so there's no issue about access, or?
No, no, the access is perfectly good. One thing to note about Lot five, although the, it does have the adequate amount of frontage, the hundred and fifty feet on Mill Road, they are going to be proposing a, and they're showing on this, in our plan, a common access easement for a common driveway, and that will cross over Lot two and provide access to Lot one, two, and five. That would be dealt with, I guess, at earlier, because they'd have to come back with a special permit for installation of a common driveway for those lots. But as far as, it doesn't really impact the A and R, because they, first of all, they have access on to Mill Road, or potential access, viable access on to Mill Road. There's nothing that would prohibit it, they're establishing an access, a common driveway, as long as they go through the special permit process.
Is there any conservation areas of this land?
Yeah.
No?
I don't think so, no.
Sure. You will have to go to, I did talk to the assessor. You'd have to request that it be released from the sixty one.
The forestry program?
Yeah, the forestry program.
That's run out.
Oh, wait.
Because it's expired.
I'm sorry?
It's expired.
Yeah, he, check with, check with the assessor, though, but find out what process that you got to go through, because you have to go through a formal release.
So anybody here to comment on this, other than the petitioner? Any discussion, I mean, it seems like we have adequate lot size, adequate frontage, no question about access.
I mean, one, two, three, and four, there doesn't seem to be any issue about that. Lot five, since it's not an accepted road, it's, I mean, the criteria, whether it was in existence since nineteen fifty-one and whether in the planning board's opinions, it's adequate access for emergency vehicles.
Yeah.
But you, I mean, I'll defer to you, I've never...
Yeah, I mean, it's a paved road. I actually went out there to get a picture, but like...
It's right at the beginning of the road, so...
Yeah, I mean, I drove down the road, it's in good shape, it is paved, it is wide enough. And it is publicly, it does meet the criteria in that it was there, it was preexisting, the subdivision control law, and it is, it is publicly maintained.
You said they maintain it down to the bridge?
Yeah, down to the bridge, where the highway department.
And I do think, if, it sounds like you're going, but if you were trying to do something beyond the bridge, we'd have an issue because the...
No, bridge is my private law.
Gotcha.
The bridge is pretty much a bomb.
The bridge is way down past, way more than a hundred and fifty feet.
Do they used to be a sawmill down there, or is that...
That's me. That's me.
Yeah, well, but there's the one actually up, up your property, the one that was...
Yeah, that's family, but it's not really...
Okay, gotcha.
It's actually been a sawmill to the end there for three hundred and fifty years.
Wow.
Yeah.
Get all your fingers. Get all your fingers.
This one doesn't look quite right.
So...
I'll make a motion to approve the form, Ed.
Second.
All in favor of approving the form, Ed, submitted?
Aye.
So it's, so we're four votes in favor, animus. So you have a Sharpie?
I'd just like to make clear, we're not approving the common driveway tonight. What's that, you're gonna drag these along here? There is, no.
Lot four and...
All of it. All of it. Why did you think just...
Well, I thought the common driveway had to be approved.
Well, for this purpose, this is a strange process. We only look at whether the adequate frontage on a, on certain kinds of roads. We don't deal with anything else, so you meet that requirement for the purposes of the form, Ed.
Should I be on that?
But if you want to put a common driveway on these lies, you have to come back and get a special permit.
Yeah, I think they have that process, yeah.
Ready to give up that corner? Don't you usually store some of your equipment out there on the corner on going Dodge?
That's a very touchy subject.
I'll let you, it's been settled, yeah. These three need to be found over here. Back around? Three of the, what kind of, is that the...
This is jail.
It's not great, though. We're gonna need the official mile our Sharpie.
We just need three signatures.
Okay.
Let me see the mileage. And the pen. Is this good enough?
Yes.
That's flaring. I don't think the pen's right.
No.
The lawyer says it's right.
Go on to the planner. We'll take it. All right. So this is the one you're gonna need to file at the registry of deeds. I saw Mr. Dorson, we don't have to issue any kind of a...
No, I send the letter to put the saying that the board approved it, and then you can, you can go and take that and get it recorded, and you can have one of the copies herein.
Thank you.
Somebody needs to sign this one.
All right, so you have that, you have one copy, we'll keep a couple of copies here. Probably have your one. We don't need more than two, do we?
No, no, I just need mine to be filed, and I'll...
Take two for yourself, if you get it.
All right.
Well, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so next order of business?
Is an argument.
Well, it's a couple of things that are upcoming business, but just to say, Mr. Petritsman asked if we can have some time to discuss it. Am I right?
Yes.
All right, so, and who do we have?
Yeah, this is for four twenty-eight, Newbury Port Turnpike. Next, on December seventh, there's going to be a public hearing for this. It'll be a special permit site plan review modification, and they're proposing to construct an additional building. And this is, this is a follow-up to the recent zoning amendment where the lines were reconfigured in order to convert some of that outlined district to be aligned, and so this is a follow-up to that. I know, you guys want to...
Yeah, that's great, Kirk, kind of filled in. Charlie, we have Meridian Associates with a civil engineering sort of project. And I have Sandy and Brian Patrick, and the owners of, I think the address is four twenty-eight. The ownership is under four twenty, Newbury Port Turnpike, I'll see.
Correct.
The, as you recall, this is kind of the, this is the, you know, the Ipswich Bay Glass property. You know, way back when, they've built seven buildings in here now. This is the back right corner. Batch Alderbrook is back in here, and we, Sandy and Brian had purchased all the land all the way back up to the river. On the other side of the river is the, the old Girl Scout camp, which is now a, which is now owned by the city. And Sandy and Brian were good enough to make a donation to the, you know, to the town, to supplement that property. And the town is good enough to, and you folks have helped support it. The original zoning line, I think, might have been in here, and we've moved the zoning line for Light Industrial all the way back to here. What you see on here, this is what's building number five and building number three, which had been approved and constructed previously under the existing special permit that we have for the site. The lighter gray is the areas where we currently have pavement that serve those buildings. The darker gray is, is new pavement. What we have is just an extension of what's already going on in the site of, you know, a, it's an industrial park, let industrial uses with some office, which is some accessory to that primary use. It's a forty thousand square foot building. I think it probably would be the third largest building on the site. The building three, I think, is larger, and also the, the original home of Ipswich Bay Glass is also larger. If I say anything wrong, guys, just...
Building seven? Building seven is slightly larger than that, is it?
Is it, okay, so...
Which is, this is building, what number building we're talking about?
This will be, we're calling this building number four. This is building three, building five, we're calling this building number four.
Just not in order, guys.
So forty thousand square foot building, we're proposing seventy new parking spaces. We've estimated, we've estimated, under the, under the zoning, or not the zoning, but under your planning board rules and regulations, it's kind of, it's written a little bit oddly for industrial use. Calls for, it calls for a parking space for each employee plus one for each thousand square feet of building. So it'll be, we've estimated fifty employees in the building, which frankly is probably a little bit on the high side for this use. So theoretically, there should be ninety spaces, which we think is overparking. So we're proposing seventy new spaces, which is shown at this dark gray. And we've got a loading zone in this area. The idea behind the loading zone is vehicles, heavy vehicles can come in, back in, and then pull back out again. So there's a circular movement that happens here. Sandy has met with the, with the fire department, and the fire department is happy with, they have accessibility. This is a kind of gravel laydown area throughout the back of the site, so fire trucks can get out and around, as well as, you know, they can't get all the way around the building, but they have access to three sides, actually all four sides of the building. This is a detention pond, which has been constructed, you know, in anticipation that this building was gonna come along. There is currently septic system, right at this location, we're gonna build a building on top of the septic system. There's already a new septic system approved and under construction for, right in behind here, so that it'll open this area up to allow this building to happen. And that, that septic system is maxed out now. The limit on, on standard Title V system is ten thousand gallons a day, so we've, we've maxed that, and that will help serve the, you know, the buildings that are on the site. It's probably more than what we need, but it would be, it gives, it gives Sandy and Brian flexibility to, to, you know, to find tenants that may have a higher water use, but you don't want the septic system to be the thing that gets in the way of utilizing your property.
Additionally, Charlie, we agreed to put in the fire hydrants that Chief Broder requested.
Right.
Around the building.
We talked about, we talked about access to the chief. As the plan shows now, he's, he's happy. And we talked about adding a couple of more hydrants, which make common sense.
So which, yeah, sorry, I see.
I think it's best, it's almost easy to look at the, at the screen, that this built, the existing septic system is up here, right here, now, and the new septic system is under construction here, back here where the little hand is. It's sized big enough to handle this new forty thousand square foot building, plus, I mean, we, there's a, there's a state statue that says you can build anything up to ten thousand square feet, and then over ten thousand square, um, square feet, I'm sorry, gallons, then there's new requirements. So we, we're building to think of the ten thousand, even though we probably only need...
Beef it up now, and be ready for the future.
It'd be done. Same way with the, with the detention pond. This detention pond that we built here replaces one that was previously here, and it's enlarged to handle the site. So we're kind of going into this backwards, where we built the detention pond first, now we're putting the septic system in, and now we've sized the building. So it's kind of different than the normal process, but...
So that's where we are. I think this is the, you know, kind of the logical next step in this project of, you know, the site was rezoned, and here we are with Billy, with the intention certainly is to help run tax base. There's no, you know, there's, there's no sensitive users, certainly there's camping on the other side, but this is all heavily vegetated, and residences are pretty far away in this area. So this is an excellent opportunity to expand, you know, the town's tax base and to expand, you know, the park which these folks have built. I think it's perfect use here.
Charlie, there was a question.
I'm sure you've already done the calculations, but the septic system is far enough away from the brook, right?
Yes.
Yes.
That's governed by the Rivers Act, so it has to be under that's two hundred feet.
Okay.
And that's all been established and approved by the Conservation Commission.
That's correct.
Yeah, actually, that back driveway that shows on the top right of the photograph, that's now gone.
Yeah, I was wondering about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
The pavement's been removed, and it's been re-vegetated. Which is part of it.
Where does the townland begin?
It basically begins right at the edge of the photograph.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, right up in there.
What's your occupancy now, in your industrial apartment? Your occupancy pretty good now?
Yes, yeah, it is. We're basically four.
So we'll be back to open the public hearing with you in December, and we're hoping to push this through as quick as we can.
So we thought we'd come and see if anybody had any questions that really popped right up that we could, get answers to and address.
All the storeware calculations for the roof, so it's all been figured out and they're looking at those?
It's all been provided, yeah, with the filing that we made, that's correct.
So is that necessitating the increase of the retention pond?
That's, yes.
Yeah.
We took the approach when we moved the pond, to get some more parking, that would just build the pond as big as we could.
Gotcha.
And that's what we did.
Do you have a color flyer?
No, I did, I've received a package about a week ago, but I haven't had a chance to get it. Is that one soils test that's in the pond, an old test, Charlie, or is that a new one?
New one.
A new one?
Yes.
Oh, this test here?
You showed one soils test.
Oh, no, that was, I think... Oh, no, that was, I think, I think that was, Sandy, I think we did that before we built the pond, the soil log in the middle of the pond. That was, that was-
I didn't look if it was in the package, but I just-
Yeah, I, I, yeah, well, we haven't done, we, we haven't built it. We, we've built it based upon that soil testing.
Is that, is that what you mean, Larry? I mean, we built, we went down there and dug the soil, yes, specifically to build that pond.
That's right.
So it isn't like it was done five years ago. It was done last year.
Just a few months before we got the pond approved by the Concom.
And what's the, any water in the bottom of the pond?
No, no, it's, it's, we're four feet above seasonal groundwater there. It's, it's an infiltration pond, sloughs are-
Building-
Right, now these are-
One, whatever it was over there.
Yeah, this is, this one's an infiltration pond, and it's, it's infiltrating, and I don't think you've got any water.
Larry, I haven't physically walked down there, but I, I don't think there's any water in it.
The soil's got pretty nice, when you get down off of that hill, the soils get pretty gravel.
I'd like to come over, hopefully maybe next week or week after to take a walk before the hearing.
Did you give me a call? I'll be happy to meet you and show you around. The backyard is a pretty busy place.
Yeah, I was back there last time, two years ago.
Well, there's falcophytes running around all over the place, so it would be best if we met, yeah.
So we have a, you're on the calendar for December 7th? Good, so we'll make sure you, you get notice out and-
I just want to say you've done a real nice job on the entrance way, and that's the only part that people see, really. It looks really nice with that stone wall, which I don't think we even required that something-
No, it was, it was an old wall that was there.
Yeah.
And we just tuned it up a little bit.
But it looks really nice.
Well, we tried to keep it nice. Thank you for noticing.
Yeah, I think this is an asset to the town.
Absolutely. There's no butters but the town.
Right, right.
And really outside of this room, there's probably not too many people that are-
No one's back there, probably.
The Sasa will know.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Probably will.
We, we brought a schematic, too. You always ask for one. So that's what the building will look like. That's the front entrance.
So this is intending to be office industriu-, you know, uh-
Exact same components, same colors, just a different configuration, same caliber of construction. So if there's any questions about that, I mean, what, if you've been in there, if you see what the caliber of the buildings are, it's just going to be a, a very similar building. Do you need me to leave this with you now, or?
That's not in, that's not in the package.
Okay, yeah, just, just put, I really, if I can get digital and-
I'll, I'll email it to you. Any other questions? We're good.
Is there going to be a loading dock?
Yes, on the right-hand side.
Okay, we're not sure that there's a loading dock right there.
It's around the corner, far side of the building. Brian, if you roll in the other way with the good side out, it's a better one.
I'm young, right?
You gotta go to architecture school a little bit.
You need two bricks if you do it yellow or hard and intended to draw it this way and here.
617, 633, 2373. Thank you, Rick.
Could we, could we request that the town send Mr. Graham a request for the pricing so that we can get that and get a payment going to, to keep this, keep this moving? Because we do, we do seem to have some people kicking the tires and some activities, so it would be in our best interest if we can keep this moving forward and maybe, maybe get a tenant secured sooner than later.
Well, it's, it's in the town's best interest, too. Your friendly assessor's interest.
Well, what we're hap- hoping is that we can get an approval in early December. As, as we said, the septic system is in the inspection process as it's built. And actually, Charlie's going to have a crew there tomorrow to, as build the, the second half of the field, so that we can complete it and then switch from the old system into the new one. And that will allow us to start construction on removing the old field once it's up and running, the new one's up and running and tested, so that we could be ready to build the building in the spring. Our, our goal is to start a, a foundation as early in the spring as we can. Because we do have, we have some tenants that are kicking the tires real hard, would like to sign them up.
Right, absolutely.
Good.
Sounds good.
Anything that we can prepare?
For, for the December meeting?
That's really what-
Well, they've asked for a couple waivers, and I was going to ask a question on the parking. Is that a 70 in addition to, or 70, not counting any that you might have lost?
These are 70 new spaces. We haven't lost any spaces.
You haven't lost any, okay.
I think one thing that needs to be said is that all of this open land that you see back there, that now have trails and stuff on it, I mean, those are kind of uncounted areas. I mean, we could easily say, here's another 40 or 50 parking spaces we're going to designate in this area. We just, we haven't had the need to. And really, even with the, the usages we have from our current tenants, we don't even see the need for the 70, really, but I mean-
Based upon the density we've got so far.
The density, and, I mean, we've, we've got some long-term leases here where we've committed to a certain number of spaces, which are far below what, what is written to the bylaw. Right, right.
I don't know how far you go tonight with the informal, but maybe if it's appropriate, the board could say that the 70 is okay versus the 90, just so they, and as well, they've asked for another waiver on the fee, on the administrative fee.
This is outside of the public hearing, I mean, is that-
Well, I, I don't think we would take a binding vote on it, but we can express our opinions.
I don't have a problem.
I don't have a problem with it either.
I usually defer to these two with this kind of stuff when it comes to, you know, waivers, but could you sketch an area for expansion if it was necessary? You mentioned that there's all kinds of land around that you could potentially-
Yeah, we, to get to the zoning, we'd only need 20 more spaces. We can put 20 spaces right there.
Reserve for future.
We're building the septic system so that we can drive and park on top of it.
Put it there as well.
It sounds like it's not going to be an issue either way. I mean, I, then again, you hate to find you have a tenant that has a high occupancy, and, and, you know, you need the spaces.
If we needed it, we'd build them, right?
Yeah.
Right, so-
But that's, that's part of the negotiation. I mean, if, if we sign a lease with a tenant, it includes use of a certain X number of spaces. And we're cognizant of that, right? And we're also very cognizant of the, the usage of the septic system.
Sure.
So, I mean, we're not, we're not going to, we're not going to lease a building to a tenant who's going to put people in, in little tiny cubicles and try to put 300 people in the building.
Right. What do you have between the buildings there? I think 3A and the new building, 25 feet or something?
It's 30 feet.
It's 30 feet. And, and that was one of the chief's questions. What he want, what he is concerned was that, that drive-through there and getting two more hydrants, right now there's a hybrid that exists right here. And, and the proposal is to run the water line out to a hybrid here and a hybrid here in the backyard.
Because if you needed additional parking, that would be your aisle to get back there, too.
That's correct.
And the, the fee, the waiver of the fee is, I believe, that it's based upon the size of the lot. And where we've developed enough of a lot, we've, what we've done is we've taken the area that we're actually developing and based our fee based upon that. We thought that was fair. We thought it was a little unfair to have the fee based upon a lot, which we've already developed, already paid fees on. So that's why the, we, we, we think we're obviously being fair on that.
So we've got a pretty good vote on the rest of the site, it seems like, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so.
I think that's something we can vote on tonight, don't you?
What's the proposed fee?
I don't know if it's in front of me, yeah.
It says 1,000.
It's proposed. Proposed, is that consistent with what you'd be able to, you know, do it?
That's an administrative fee. It does have a difference.
That's not, okay.
We've, we've already taken in the application for that fee.
Right, but if they didn't agree, they have to still grant the waiver, they have to go through the-
Yeah, oh, okay.
So, has the fee been, uh, deposited?
Yeah, I've already, yeah, I've already taken it, deposited with the treasure-
It's already been spent.
So, I mean, yeah, so once, once we turn over the treasure, is there a way to get that back, or, I mean, uh?
No, 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 we weren't, we weren't asking you to waive, if you took what the fee was going to be for the whole site. We're asking, you guys have asked for more, of what we think is fair.
Okay, I see.
They pay accordingly, and, and they're just saying, I think we've done it this way, I'll, based on the area that's being, being developed and not-
So prorated fee based on the area to be, to be modified or amended?
Right.
I mean, it, it does seem to be unfair to, each time he, he modify, you know, builds another building, to charge a fee based on the entire lot and that, right?
Yeah.
Be a good deal for the town, but, you know.
How do you feel about that, Mark?
Yeah, it's a fair way.
Can we take a vote on it? Everyone, I don't know if we can vote on it, I think it's an agreement to, to, we may waive the fees one day.
We may waive, just, I think that's, you know, it's a preliminary procedural thing. I, you know, I think you can, we could vote on it tonight.
On the parking waiver, though?
No, no, not that, not that.
Gotcha. No, then again, I'm sorry, then I think that the collection of fee, I think we can vote on allowing the fee to be determined based on a prorated, uh, schedule.
Based on the area.
Based on the area, relatively, yeah.
Oh, I would just say the fee, the fee of $1,000 is acceptable.
Second.
In favor, so it's unanimous. All right, see you on December 7th.
Thank you, everybody, everybody. Thank you for-
Thank you.
Do you have anybody on the OSRD for 42 Newbury Road?
No, I was just gonna, I'm just gonna put out there that we do that, it's going to be on the agenda, it's an OSRD for 42 Newbury Road. And you, you already got that.
I haven't, yeah.
Yeah.
How many lots?
Five lots, you know.
How many acres?
I don't have a lot of, I was just, I, I put that on there, but I haven't really looked at it myself, or I don't have it within, to give any details. I wasn't really wanting to, I was just announcing that we're going to have an OSRD on the next agenda.
Oh, for informal, uh?
No, it's actually going to be a public hearing. They, they, they didn't want to do the informal discussion, so they brought it, they brought it in, submitted it, and even, it's-
Are there any waiver requirements?
No, there hasn't, no, there hasn't been any waiver requirements on, I don't think so, but, I mean, that's where, did you notice anything in there?
I haven't looked at it.
Yeah.
I just got, it's fabulous. Hayes, Hayes, no, we have some sprays.
I was, I, I really, I was wanting to, like, maybe sort of announce what the next meeting date is, since we, I mean, since, it's pretty much set, like, we're doing the first Wednesday of each, no, I mean, I'm sorry, the second Wednesday of each month. But if I have, like, if I have applications that are in the queue, just to, like, give you notice that, that there is something on the agenda. But in this case, I wanted to give him the chance to introduce his project, because that's definitely on the agenda, but also just wanted to mention the OSRD would be on the agenda as well. But they declined to come in for it.
Is the OSRD on 12/7 also?
I'm sorry.
Is it on 12/7 also?
Yes, yeah.
All right, well?
What you pick, it's good for me.
All right, good. So invoices?
I have timesheets.
I didn't sign this one twice.
The second one, I've got only Chris's signature, you know. There's actually two timesheets, but four pages assigned.
Oh, I, I, yeah, no, I got the, the high road school building.
I gotta get drunk, yeah.
At the same time, yeah.
Why, I can be an architect, and I'll really pull it away.
What did I just do, I didn't, I didn't print them.
There's a, June 15th, it's actually June. I'm trying to get hold of all these units. Just about there, like, two sets behind. But that May 25th meeting was a really long, it was like a three and a half hour meeting, something like that. And then we had three in June, and ever since June, I've been like three sets of minutes behind. What's that?
I'm just looking at you.
Oh, and you asked me a question.
Three meetings behind.
He's Cliff, he's, he's still checking to find something.
I'm looking at it now.
I'm like better than the computer for that.
Cliff's better than the computer.
No, I'm not as good as I used to be at this point.
I mean, it's good to find things wrong, not things right. That's all I am. I'm not worried.
Anyone have any comments on June 15th?
No.
I move that we approved the minutes of June 15th as, as provided.
Okay.
All in favor?
Right. Couple minor corrections on page two of the, so this one?
So, couple minor?
Second, second paragraph down, it says where's. Shouldn't that just be where?
Charlie, where, um, you're right.
Take, and it's two in a row there.
Yeah.
Not the S. And then another one in the next paragraph.
Crazy, maybe S.
Then they get right again.
On page two, at the end of that first paragraph, in that regard, they anticipate there will be the minimal of medical waste from the site, probably minimum is probably the, the right one. And then the very next line, where state, there will eventually be up to, add the word "be."
Yeah, okay.
So miss Spelling, the third paragraph after 120 spaces is requested?
Oh, we are, not we are.
You're questioning?
Requested.
Whatever you want to say.
In the same paragraph, Kirk, the second paragraph on page two, where notes, where notes that state regulations restrict, it should be, restrict should be single. State regulations restrict the amount.
Yeah, restrict.
Page three, Kirk.
Mm-hmm.
First paragraph, third line, uh, the conservation permission permit. That the conservation permit, permit them to fill, add the word to in front of fill.
Yeah, okay.
Cliff, does this write it on the third paragraph down on page three? Several abutting property owners are present, or were present.
Uh, were, yeah, were.
I think also on page three, end of third paragraph, you just misidentified the Institute for Savings Bank. It's the Institution for Savings. In Newbury Portman's vicinity.
I believe that was the, this was the long meeting with the six public hearings.
Top paragraph, here it is, four. The board members discuss and determine or determined.
Where are you at, I'm sorry?
I'm way down in the paragraph.
Oh, I see, the board members discuss and determine.
Something's funny, I'm not an English major, but...
That they, how about determine that they would be?
Determine that they would be, okay.
I just think in paragraph, top paragraph five of the first sentence, you may have an extra comma.
Of which?
So first line on paragraph five, or page five, overlay district area, comma, and comma.
Oh, I see.
I just, I mean, you probably take out one of that second comma. Check with your wife.
I've always just made a policy of throwing as many commas around.
Hey, she's had some great articles in the Globe lately. She has.
Third paragraph, another comma you might not need. First sentence, paragraph five, uh, first paragraph, perfect, third paragraph, first sentence. Let you know that the only outdoor improvement to the site, comma, will be an outdoor logging.
Okay.
I just don't want Cliff to have all the fun.
And he said the second paragraph.
The second one?
Yes, it's here someplace, maybe.
That's the, that's the...
Someone needs another signature.
Actually, I guess.
How many signatures is this name?
You better need Chris's on the signature.
Pretty good.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of May twenty-fifth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, it's approved.
Who do we get next?
Motion to adjourn.
The one that was about the time sheet, uh...
Oh, right, we, we, next week we can, pardon me, at the December seventh meeting, consider it, but every, every meeting we go through this, this process of having everyone sign the timesheets, I think is a good thing to make sure we're overseeing, but sometimes it's not convenient and could hold up a paycheck. So he was gonna ask that, uh...
Yeah, that actually, I don't think it does hold up the paychecks.
Okay.
They do, like, get, if it doesn't get signed, they do get after you, like, to make sure everything gets signed with the original.
But they're not gonna not pay you.
No, it, it usually, it just puts them in a bind because I guess if they get audited. But they do, they are diligent about getting those signatures and, you know, having the paperwork all in.
Is it possible to delegate that to this one member?
I wouldn't think so.
What?
Um, the approval.
Although, I mean, he comes down to my house all the time.
Right, and my office is right down the street now, but, uh...
Yeah, it is good, recently, because you...
Well, I think you'd need to ask someone at Town Hall, like, uh...
Let's just keep it at three.
Yeah, the...
I mean, I would ask her.
No, I was gonna say, I say, because it was, uh, it, um, I think this, um, one of the, the ZBA administrator, I actually, she does that. And, uh...
From Paul Burden?
Yeah, well, get this chairman's signature.
Oh.
Which, I mean, right now is probably, it's probably less, because you're, you're actually downtown and you're typically available, so it hasn't really been a problem, I guess, of reason. It was only that, um, I think on, um, you know, that period, like, that night, like, in September, where one, um, I got one signature, and then, and then, um, and then they came up to me later and were like, well... I thought I had turned in a full time sheet, and then, but I, all I had in my file was like the one with the one signature, so... It's just sometimes it's been kinda hard to get this.
Could you ask Debbie if, if there is a process to, and it will, and it will consider it at the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, I could, I could check. I would just wonder if it might be amenable to, to doing that. But, I mean, it's not, right now, I think with, because you're, you're in town now and you, I can, I can get your signature relatively easy, and then you end up, you're on Monday night, you typically give yours on Monday night at the selectman meeting, so it doesn't...
Oh, ask, ask her, it'd be easier.
Yeah.
What else you got?
Larry's got something he wants to tell. I, I actually just came for four-twenty, but it was interesting to watch you guys look at the minutes. Just wanna let you know.
You know that we actually do it?
Right, now that I'm here. The four-fourteen Harrell Street's coming along really fast, as you guys have all noticed.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, neat sight, it's really green in the back. They're doing a really fine job there. I've noticed a couple of things that I talked to Charlie about tonight I'm gonna call, and that's the pond out front seems relatively close to, to one-thirty-three, you know, where it goes out and drops off. Should be about twenty feet, fifteen feet from the edge of the road. So he's gonna look into that. I wanted to ask about where the board is, or the board of selectmen, on the timing lights before they come in here and start asking for a CO or something. That was part of that, and I don't know where that, where that went. Yeah, I was gonna ask you, Kirk, but I keep forgetting to. I recall that when we discussed this, we asked you to send a letter to the selectmen asking them to contact the state about that issue to get, to get them...
I, uh...
And I thought we, we voted, the board voted.
I'm pretty sure it was, I mean, I, I recollect it as well, that we were gonna initiate the process, knowing that we didn't have any real authority to do that, we were nonetheless going to, to tell the, ask the support of the selectmen to contact the Department of Transportation and see if they'd make a, an adjustment before they do their analysis, right? Wasn't that the word, that they were gonna do an analysis?
The idea was, the idea was, and I think it was suggested by, by Mr. Coughlin's traffic engineer, that, that, that the Mass DOT might...
Mueller.
Might be more susceptible to expediting that if they get a letter from the, the selectman of the town.
Yeah.
I mean, this, in the next week, we're gonna get a letter.
I've never seen that letter, so obviously you didn't send it, right?
No, no, I haven't, no, I, I, because I, I thought...
It's in our minutes where we, where we asked you to do that, so...
Well, I remember the discussion of it being that, that, that did come up, but I thought it was actually, for some reason, I thought that it was actually decided against, that it wasn't necessary to actually send a letter, that, that, that there was some discussion about it just being...
If you send such a letter, it'll get on the selectman's agenda, and then they'll take it up probably, you know, you know, at the next meeting or maybe the...
Yeah, I mean, I could go in and do it and get it.
I think that's the best way to do it.
Yeah, you have hours tomorrow, or tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll be here as well.
Take one of the minutes and see what we said we were gonna do.
Yeah.
And I think that makes sense, that we can just try to, like, you know, he said it, just by getting a letter there, it gets on the agenda, and that's, that's progress.
Right. Yeah, well, that, and then, the other thing was, and I don't recall, I think it was left to be done prior to endorsing the plans or prior to the CO or something, was the design of the bypass, westbound bypass. That, my recollection was that they were to give the board a formidable plan to do that, but the town wouldn't actually act on it until perhaps the ball fields were gone, because you wouldn't want it there.
I wasn't sure if they really agreed with that, though. I was looking at the minutes.
Oh, we did talk about it.
They did.
Were they gonna, yeah.
In fact, I thought I saw a schedule as one was.
Well, it should be right in our decision, right in the approval letter.
Yeah.
I thought, I think it is, yeah.
Where do they stand on that?
About the passing, like, there's...
I don't know, I, I couldn't find anything in my records, but I think it was one of those things that was supposed to happen after I was gone or, you know, I wasn't...
It definitely was. I mean, I know we discussed it, I couldn't remember when I saw a plan at some point, a proposed site plan that did include that.
Well, they revised the plan to show in front of the driveway where they were gonna paint the big H's to not block the intersection. But I don't think I have a plan that shows the westbound bypass.
But that's not in the approval letter, is that what you're saying?
The passing lane is, yeah, the, 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 the condit, there is a condition about having a passing lane.
A westbound?
Westbound passing.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, there is that. I won't remember how it's worded, but we can roll it and take a look.
It was, as I recall, it was supposed to be a permitted or a permissible plan that wouldn't be implemented, and Coughlin wouldn't have to pay for it, but it wouldn't be implemented until the ball fields were gone, and it maybe it became a problem and it was needed.
That's because the ball field parking happens right now, and you can't do it.
You can't do it.
Yeah.
Plus, there's a Paul Burden near there too, that might...
There's a what?
A Paul, the utility. That might be in the way, but, 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 the reason I brought it up is because projects moving along so fast, they'll be coming in here for a CO, and I didn't want, you know, just the, the board to have it in their laps that they hadn't, you know, ran this time. So look at those.
Yeah, I'll check, I'll check and make sure.
Okay, now.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.